How's everybody going tonight?
Good.
Can you guys in the back hear me? Grab the mic. I hear no, I hear yeah. Can you hear me or not? Yes? No.
Once everybody stops talking, we'll be able to...
It'll be alright. Okay, well try the microphone, move it up just a little bit. See if that helps. How's that? Is that a little better? And we think we've gotten the thing that goes gee real loud when we move around. So you have to deal with me if I hit that because I tend to move. Thanks for coming out tonight. Excited to see so many faces and several new faces. First town hall meeting we've had, this type of town hall meetings, we're excited. We didn't know what to expect. You know, we set up for 80 chairs. You see, we keep pulling chairs out. And if it's typical with residents around here, we'll keep more coming in for the next 15 minutes. Fortunately, we have enough chairs. Let me start. First, thank you all for being here. Excited to have you. I'm gonna start with a PowerPoint. And I'll run through some things, but let me start with the senior staff. Just so you know who they are sitting up there for those that don't. I've asked them to come primarily so they can hear directly. I mean, they hear from me all the time. You know, the board's directing this, or I've heard from a resident about that. But I wanted them to be here to hear what you folks have to say directly. Okay, now, let me start. Tara. Alright, Tara works with me. Executive Secretary, Ms. Phillips is out right now. For those that may not know, she's taking a little time off. Tara stepped in. We appreciate having her. Sonia. Sonia is at Wreckin' Parks. Art. Most people will be around any time though, Art. He's our controller. He's a little nervous. He thinks I'm gonna be asking him tough questions tonight. Oh, okay, we'll start again. Tara's standing for a moment.
Thank you, ma'am.
There's Tara. It's informal, so please, it's good if you need some. Sonia. Art. Joe Reinhardt, food and beverage manager. Chief? Chief Massey? He's... Anybody figure out who he is? Tom Perry, new aquatics director. Kerry Nelson, public works. Those who may not know, Damian.
Little Walter.
Golf director of golf. Billy Casper. And Teresa. Marketing department. I'm Bob Thompson, general manager. Now, let's go around the room. Tom? Alright, we'll start, we're gonna start with the PowerPoint. Let me hit the lights. You're gonna find I move around a lot. Yeah, which might hit them. Let's see if we can see this. We're gonna see how this works. There you go. I'll move around. This is actually a picture here from our community overlooking the bay. I mean, we lose track often of how beautiful it is to live here. We get caught up in day-to-day. This is actually one of the pictures locally. Okay, wanted to talk about what we're gonna cover today or this evening. Just set some ground rules. We're gonna go with the PowerPoint presentation first. The reason I wanted to start with that, first, it's a good warm-up for me. It's a great tool to get started. I really don't mind talking, but the first three or four minutes, you always gotta try to get through that. Secondly, I found this amount and about. I get a lot of the same questions from different groups. In addition, Teresa's been fielding calls the last few days, or emails and phone calls, with questions that we've sent out. We're having this meeting. If you have a question and you can't be there, please send it to us. So what we thought, we tried to do is address many of those questions before we even get to the Q and A, you know, once we get moving in this. Now, when we do open the floor for questions, it sounds a little odd, but I've gotta tell you, it's very, very important to me. Courteous and respectful to one another, to me, to the staff. If we're not, we end the meeting. Okay? It's here to have good... It doesn't, and it's okay with me if you disagree, okay? Or it's okay to have a strong feeling about something. Just don't throw rocks at me or the staff, okay? It just, that's not what we're here for. It's not here as a complaint section. It's here to hear from you folks on things that we're doing well, things we may not be doing as well. I mean, knowing what we're gonna do is to actually ask you. And that's what we're here to do, okay? All questions should be directed to me. This is my meeting, okay? Please ask me. They're here to hear, hear your inputs, see you, put the names to faces. But this is for me to interact with you folks, okay? They're there to support, they're my supporting cast, okay? If I get fumbling around, Teresa will grab me and go, "Ah, slow down." Or one of you said, "Chief," will hit me with something. So they're there to support, but please direct them to me. We will bring the microphone when we go to the Q and A at the end of the PowerPoint. We'll bring the mic to you. You don't have to stand up. We had the podium, I said, forget that. It's not that type of meeting. We'll bring the mic over to you. So you don't have to get up if you don't want to. The only thing I ask, give your name and address. That way, if we need to respond or do some follow-up with you, we can do that. We're gonna limit individual questions to three minutes. Now, I will tell you, I break that rule. I tend to talk a little long. My meeting, I won't break the rule properly. But I'm asking you to do that. If nothing else, look around the room. We have a lot of people here tonight. I wanna make sure those that wanna be heard, those that wanna share something, have the opportunity to do that. If we get lost in one issue and we spend, you know, 10, 15, 20 minutes on one issue, we're not gonna be able to get some other issues that I want everyone to have the opportunity to share theirs, big or small. Any questions about that? Simple, short, we're gonna try to keep it moving. Alright, let's talk about some... I'm gonna just hit you all with some questions that I've had over the last couple months, two or three months, either while I'm out in the community, someone calls me, shoots me an email. So these are, I'm gonna just give you some of the Q and A to start with. First, newsletter. How many here have noticed a difference in the newsletter? Come on, audience participation. I hope everyone has. We've really changed the newsletter. The next one's about to come out. One of the questions I had is, hey, if you're really good in finances and you're looking at the money, what do you know with the bigger, more colorful newsletters? They're more expensive. You know your cost has money. Let me show you some facts. Previous years, newsletter, we budgeted $36,000 annually to print our newsletter. Thirty-six thousand. That includes printing the newsletter. Everybody remember the four-page? It's red and black and that's it? Not full color? Thirty-six thousand. By the time you go to print, design, and mailing, that's what it was costing us. Lot of money. Anybody I mean out here with the news, the current newsletter costs is full color, much larger.
Zero.
Zero. Last newsletter we printed, we, Teresa in the marketing department, okay? Her team basically raised approximately $7,200, which is what the cost of that particular newsletter was. Print, mailing, everything all in. Okay? So what she's doing is selling advertising in the newsletter to offset the cost. Our new one's about to come out. It's longer. What's this one gonna include for those that have been here a while? The elections, right? So we have the extra pages with the candidates and all the information. The bigger it is, the more it costs. She's already raised the money in that newsletter to cover the cost, and I think we're making $200. Is that about right, Teresa? Making about $200. So we're making money on a bigger spread. So for that question, I just wanna make sure we, yes, we're doing it, I think, better, more color, but we're also doing it more cost-effectively. It's how we look at every piece of, everything we do in the organization. We're trying to look at bottom line. Next question, natural gas. Hot topic, everyone's asking me. Where are we? What's going on? Well, I don't control the natural gas, but I do try to stay in contact with Chesapeake, who will be delivering the natural gas from the pipeline side of it. And then ESG will be our servicer. That's what it looks like right now. Let's talk about natural gas. Worcester County approved the franchise agreement. You all probably saw that in the paper. Okay, that was a few weeks back. Next thing is, the Chesapeake Utilities applied to the Maryland Public Service Commission, okay? And they've received preliminary approval to run their pipeline, okay? There's one other document they have to do to get the final approval, but they've gotten over the big hurdle line. Application to the Federal Energy Regulatory Commission. Again, I spelled them all out because they use the short acronyms, but I wanna make sure I said them all correctly. That has been applied for. Also, state and local permits have been applied for. The state and local permits are to actually do the digging and trenching to put the pipeline in the ground. Okay? Everybody following this on that? Time table is to begin construction by mid-September of the pipeline. Now, when they're talking about the pipeline, that's from the, where it's currently in Millsboro, down to Berlin. They're talking about coming down 113 to 575, down Friendship Road out near Decatur. Right there is where the trunk line is at this point, all everything that's been approved. That's what it's for. From there, the ESGs and whoever else may get the market to deliver, ESG is obviously our connection point, they're the ones that will be connecting. Okay? Lastly, the goal still is to have that pipeline, that part of the pipeline, constructed by the end of the year. For those that don't know, the primary reason that was going to occur was because of some tax advantages through the federal government to have this work completed in that timeframe. That's what moved this whole process forward, where they get the tax breaks on it. Okay? That's where we are with natural gas. Still a lot more we have to find out. What's it gonna cost us when it comes to us? What's the conversion that each home gonna cost? How we're gonna build, be built for us? It's something we're gonna have to write. Do all of our appliances get converted? How do they get converted? Does someone local do it? Does the gas company do it? They're all the next series of questions. I had some ideas on it, but I don't know that they're factual yet, so we'll wait until we hear from who's doing it. It looks like ESG will maintain the gas or the fuel part of it. They'll be our delivery system through our homes. At one point, it looked like Chesapeake and ESG. Chesapeake might buy them or what have you. At current condition, it looks like they'll stay as two separate entities. Okay? Hope that answers the natural gas questions. Mosquitoes. Okay, y'all like that. You know what I couldn't find was the zzzzz. I said I wouldn't make the noise, but I did it. Okay? Mosquitoes. I mean, a lot of calls, you're not spending enough money on mosquitoes. You stopped spending money. I had an email from a gentleman tell me I did not, I must have used the money elsewhere instead of on mosquitoes. Okay? Alright, let me explain where we are. I did it again for you. Okay, first, mosquito counts, okay, are about the same as they were last year. I've had some people go, oh, they're less. Some people saying they're more. And Ocean Pines, the mosquito count is about the same as it was. And that's straight from the county, the folks that actually go and do the counting and all that. They actually also use dry ice. There's a spot down near the wastewater treatment plant that they've had a little higher count. And they recently did a dry ice count. Apparently, dry ice puts off the same type of chemical or the same type of incentive for the mosquito to land on you and bite you as we would. So with, you know, they're using that to get more accurate passing. That was the only spot within Ocean Pines that had it. Spray time. This is different than years past. Every year, we talk to the county about what their tactic and strategy is gonna be to control the mosquitoes. Spraying is what they use, and they use the pellets they drop in the water. In years past, we've heard the truck early in the morning, okay? That's because the truck ran up till 6:00, 6:30 a.m. while they were doing their rounds. One of the things I talked about with them was, if you ride around, what time do you start? We start at 3:00. Well, if you start at 2:00, you could be done by 5:00. Well, yeah. Well, for those that are up that early in the morning, between 5:00, 5:30, and 6:00, we have folks getting up, heading out, either go get their coffee, to run, to cycle, whatever exercise. Why have the trucks out at that point? Why not back them up an hour and have them done before most of us wake up? So they agreed to do that. The second part of that, when we're talking, they have newer trucks with the newer sprayers and obviously, or the majority of the older fleet. The newer trucks are quieter truck. And the question I said, well, if they're quieter, how much? Well, they're a lot quieter. Okay, well, so how loud are the ones not in Ocean Pines? Oh, no, you have the loud ones. And I had to ask them, like, well, why do we have the loud ones? And she said, well, and she's, you guys have always had the same one we've used. I said, well, what's the most densely populated community in the county? She kinda looked at me. There were two other gentlemen over there, and they all kinda looked, said, "You're right." I says, "Can we possibly get one of the newer trucks so it's quieter?" They kinda looked and said, "Yeah, no one's asked." So guess what? Now we have earlier, you have 2:00 a.m. to 5:00 a.m., and we have the quieter vehicle. So when folks are telling me, "I'm not seeing them, they're not out, they're not paying..." We've used it as much as any of the previous years, okay? It's just you guys aren't seeing it. For something like that, if it's possible, why shouldn't you? Okay? These, for those that can see it, Monday, section 10, I'm gonna just read them for the ZLI ahead. Section 10, 15A, 15B, 16 and 17. If you're anywhere in those sections, you're the Monday spray. Tuesday, sections 4, 11, 4, A, B, C, D, 18 and 19. Wednesday, section 9, 12 and 13. Thursday, sections 1, 2, 3 and 7. And Friday, section 5, 6 and 8. Know what happens Monday? They're back to 10, 15A, 15B, 16 and 17. So that's the cycle. I'll ask all the questions till the end. Always so I don't get stopped on these, but if you have one, just hang on to it for me. These were stats I got right from the county, and I revalidated this about three hours ago. Just wanted to make sure I knew we have people. I didn't know we had this many, but it's nice to see. I knew we had folks, so I wanted to make sure I had that. Now, I'm guessing someone's gonna say your section's not in there?
Yes.
Okay. I thought it may come up. I wrote them all down. I could have transposed it wrong. What section is it?
18F.
I don't recall, 18F. Teresa will write that. 18F. I will get that answer for you. Eighteen dollars of 18. I knew someone had the answer. Inclusive of 18F.
Oh, even though you have 15A and 15B.
Yeah, because they're two different locations, different turnover agreements.
Thank you.
Okay? Yes?
Is that every Friday?
Yes, sir. Now, here's the only thing that controls, where they do come out, they actually do a count before they start spraying in certain areas. They can't just spray all the time. If the count's low, if they check their trap, they do the dry ice test or something, and they're not getting any mosquitoes, they don't spray the, they don't spray the chemical. But they test it, and it's not just in one spot all the time. They test all, everywhere they go. But yes, it's every, that day of the week is when yours is sprayed, if it's being sprayed.
And if the count is high?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Alright, MediaCom. And I'm not opening, I'm not opening it up for MediaCom, okay? I don't have any good answers, alright? Actually, I had a couple of staff say, "Are you really gonna bring that name up?" I am, okay? Here's what I'm gonna tell you about MediaCom. They've had a complete change in local management, okay? They have, they, I know, I hear the monkey groans. I got it. Okay, I'm just telling you where they are. Could be better and different. I'm bringing updates because I have questions about it. I don't know how to run lines. I don't know anything about that, so I can't answer those questions. But Glenn, and I spelled it out, okay, because I couldn't say his name, but Bassanio, I spelled it the way she said, okay? He is the new regional director. He comes with over 25 years' experience with a cable company, Time Warner. The local folks are impressed and a little intimidated. Apparently Glenn will hop in a truck in the morning. A blog was sent by him for a few hours at that. He's been out in our community multiple times. He's really, he's had apparently a lot of experience with cableing of all sorts. So they were excited about that. They also brought in a new tech operations manager, Pat. Pat has over 20 years' experience with Comcast. Now, what this tells me, okay, is we've got two new heads of state in those areas, okay, that are not MediaCom peoples. I've gotta tell you, that's refreshing because we're gonna get a new look at how we're serviced here from the MediaCom side, okay? They're working on, and forgive me, anybody's a good cable buff and Kerry, you probably don't, or not, the nodes, they're replacing nodes. We've had over-usage, too much usage on individual nodes, which has caused a lot of issues we've had. Glenn picked up on that, and they've been replacing, redirecting, and adding new. Now, again, I'm just sharing the updates because I've had the questions. Okay, the big top-secret, okay, facilities planning group.
That's what worries me about MediaCom. I mean, we just wanted to answer. Then we could tell us why you don't have the TV and the phone.
I'm not MediaCom.
Somebody in Idaho.
Katie actually talked to me about that. That they've redirected our calls to centralized, which you would get Idaho. They don't understand the regional issues. But they're trying to come up with a solution on that. As a matter of fact, I talked to Katie. A lot of these slides, I just talked directly, like Chesapeake mosquito folks, Katie with MediaCom, just to make sure I was accurate before I had the slides. They recognize there's some regional challenges. If you're talking to someone in Idaho, they have no idea where Ocean Pines is or what the issues are. They recognize that, and that's something Glenn is trying to look at for us. I don't know what the end result, Katie didn't know what the end result was there. Okay? Okay, secret meetings. There's been a lot of talk about me holding secret meetings. Folks, anybody that knows me, there's nothing secretive about me. What you see is what you get, okay? We're having facility planning group meetings, okay, for several reasons. But let me give you a little of the factors behind, or some of the reasoning that we're having the closed meeting. There's nothing secret. I'm telling people we're having them. If they were secret, I wouldn't tell you we're having them, okay? It's just opening them up for the intense scrutiny that we get under. And many times, very biased or one-sided without sharing all the information makes it very difficult. And quite frankly, it makes it real hard to get good, qualified people that wanna try to help with things if everything they say is gonna be twisted, turned, or absolutely beat down if they even open their mouth. Okay? So there's reasoning behind this. Couple things, just some factual things to understand. Requirements under the Maryland Home Runners Act, which is what's being quoted that we're violating. We're not, okay? Assault legal counsel. If you look at our bylaws, our bylaws give reasoning, give the ability for us to do that. Now, some folks are gonna debate that, okay? And that's fine. I'm telling you, we spoke, the board has given the blessing to have these meetings. I read the bylaws. I would never purposely violate a bylaw or any law. It's just not my nature, okay? This refers, okay, the Maryland Home Runners Act is to prevent, okay, the governing body to make decisions without the group that they're governing knowing what those decisions are. As much as I'd like to think I have decision-making authority, I don't. Everybody thinks I have full decision-making on the money we have or all of that. My limit to sign on things, for those that don't know, is $15,000. Sounds like a lot of money in a $10 million budget. It's nothing. Okay? So I'm not the governing body. This law prevents your governing body from doing secretive stuff and spending money and doing things without you knowing as the membership. That's not what we're doing. We're gathering facts and information so I can get smarter to make good recommendations to the board. The board has the ultimate authority to make all the decisions, redirect, like it, don't like it. They're the governing body. The bylaws of Ocean Pines differentiate, there's two different groups if you read the bylaws, okay? They explain there's difference between a committee and ad hoc advisory bodies. It's very clear in there. Whoever crafted the bylaws way back then, part of my time, clearly differentiated these. Facility planning group is not established by the governing body. Hands-legged by me a folks on that group to help me get smarter based on their experiences. And there are days I don't think, trust me, I'll look at some of them and go, "You're no smarter." "Is Mr. Rayco, he's not here." I'll say there's days he's not smarter than me, there's days he is. I can't say that about Ted. Ted Maroney's actually pretty damn smart all the time. Those that don't know Ted. He's not here, I know it, he'll deliver, so I can say that, so. Okay, Article 10 of our bylaws, just if you all wanna go and look at this. 1001 actually establishes the committees, talks about the committees. 1003 actually talks about ad hoc advisory bodies and what they're formed, how they're formed, and they're based, an ad hoc advisory committee is based on a term, and it has like a term limit. It's set up for a specific reason. When that job's over, that group is disbanded, or that ad hoc committee is disbanded. Section 1006 speaks to the duly-established committees. And this one's interesting. Duly-established committees, written in our bylaws, apply the Maryland Home Runners Act. They did not mention advisory, ad hoc, any of those groups. Okay? Now, our board of directors can do ad hoc committees, they can do, or ad hoc advisory folks, or they can do committees. That's what that's meant, that's what the law is meant to cover. As a general manager, I'm having folks form a staffing function to help me get smarter. I'm not an engineer. I've never built a house myself. I've been involved in those processes, but I don't have a degree in that. So I'm getting people that are smarter around me that know that. So when we're looking at these things with facilities, actually with everything when it comes to our structures, to get smarter with it. That's all. There's no secret, there's no black magic about it. I'm just trying to get smarter, and I'm asking people to help me. Okay? Now, I know there'll be debate on that one, but I'm telling you, that's where it is. Okay, the other big issue, yacht club, yacht club pool fence. Oh, what is he doing now? Has he lost his mind? He's killing us at the yacht club. There's a whole mix on this, okay? Let me just give a little bit of perspective, okay? First, most won't remember these slides. Original pictures of the yacht club pool area. Another one that's a little worth telling, a little hard to see. I challenge anyone to see a fence near the bar. I told folks there wasn't a fence there. "Oh, there's always been a fence there." You don't know what you're talking about. Folks, I've been here 23 years. I played in West Ocean City. Visiting people went to the pools with friends here. I mean, it's not like I'm new to this game. I don't make stuff up. This is how it was in the past. We're well-forced, okay? We're just looking at trying new things. I'm not trying to take anything from anybody. We're not trying to do something, "Oh my gosh, he's building the Taj Mahal," or he's taking some. None of that's true. We're just trying to look at things differently. That's all. Alright, that's the yacht club pool. It has been, we are still looking at that. We're, we've gotten the MBE approval to take that fence. The fence that we're talking about, for anybody that knows, it's not the whole fence, it's the fence that separates the two here. It's not there when it was originally built. All it's gonna do is free up space here for the evening dining and entertainment. Folks, that's where our money's made. Why would we not wanna consider that? Oh, Department of Health, thank you. That and the... Yeah, we don't mention it. Keep it straight, Kerry. Okay, so just a little bit about the pool. Okay, another big question. Again, I'm trying to hit some of the bigger questions, and we'll get to the individual questions. Big question, assessment. Oh, you've increased our assessment. You're killing us with this. Folks, since it's not time, I got it. This isn't indiscriminate, we're just not making numbers up. Show you some things. You all, did everyone get the green handout when you came in? Most of you did, okay? If I read through that, you see where a lot of your assessment dollars goes, okay? We really tried to take some time. We really tried to take some time now, we didn't, I'm not going to lie to you, I'm a sales guy. I fluff it up a little bit. I made it sound nice. I didn't just say, hey, it's to cut grass. I might've said, hey, the beautiful green grass around the crystal clear pond. Or we're going to print something, make it sound nice. Okay, Teresa's passing them out because they didn't get it. So there's a lot of information, it wasn't just what we put in there. It really does show where your assessment dollar goes. Have I got them? They're coming around. Any traces? And the reason we put it in print like this, it's very, very, very easy, okay, to forget or just not understand where it goes. If you don't deal with it every day, you just don't know. So we're trying to put it out there so folks can see where some of your dollars go. How we doing, Craig? Good. Craig is our intern from S U, helping us with marketing this summer, so I didn't air introduce Craig. Sorry about that. And Dave Stewart is our, where's Dave? I didn't introduce him either because you weren't up front. Dave's our IT guy helping us tonight. For those that don't know, and when you start to ask tough questions, we are live and streaming. We're hoping this is working for folks not here, but we'll see. And I move a lot, so I'm sure he's had our problem tracking. All right, everyone has that? Did you, who did you get? Are we out? All right, we will print some more. Okay, we're not wasteful. We try not to print, you know, 150 of, you know, taking 80 or coming, so. We'll get some more printed and they're going to be available in the lobby. I think Teresa's walking to get you some more now. Okay, so that gives you some narrative. Let me show you some numbers. I thought this was, I'm numbers, I kind of look at, I try to think about it from a logical standpoint. What do I look at when we're talking about our assessment, how we're spending our dollars? Put this chart together. People are telling me, oh, it's too expensive, Ocean Pines is, you guys are priced as out of the market. I challenge you to tell me that when you look at this. I took an assessed value of 200,000. Now please, I'm not naive enough to say everyone in the house in Ocean Pines were 200,000. I need an even playing ground, okay? Your house may be 100, it may be a million. Don't know, not relevant. To me, how do I get everything on even ground? So if you had an assessed value of 200,000, okay, and you lived in Snow Hill, you have state taxes, don't you? We all do. If you read down this, whether you're Wycomico or Worcester County, your state assessment's the same. Hence, you live in the state. County, there's a break here because I've put a couple of Wycomico County towns. But if you look at Worcester County, they all should be the same for the same $200,000 house. Everybody okay with that? Just for even playing field, just to show where we are. We'll go a step further. What have most municipalities had? A town tax, right? Everybody agree with that, right? I pulled the tax rates from the towns, okay? If you lived in Snow Hill, it's .86, Pocahontas .75, .73, okay? We have a flat one. Now, please, there are different, some folks have an estate lot, water, we've got some differentiation. What I try to do is do the majority, you know, this is what's quoted in the paper, this is what people hear and see. Again, I try to keep things simple. Gets too complicated, quite frankly, I get confused. I need to keep right until I get it. But if you look at what the town tax is and you total across the line, this is what it costs you to live in these towns. Now, we don't, we don't call ours a tax, ours is an assessment, okay? The differentiation there, I had someone call me, she was really upset, and she said, look, I can write off taxes with my, they're presented town versus, I said, well, how much? $60. I said, okay, I'll give you $60. So let's add 60 to my age 43 and see what my number ends up. Oh, I argued with $60, we're still at the lower end. Now, the one here with Ocean City being slightly lower, what's the unique part about Ocean City? The condos and all the condo fees. They're based on the individual condos. I couldn't, there was no possibility, I didn't want to try and average. And we can be a fair comparison, some are much higher, if their elevator's broke, some may be new, their assessment may be lower. It would have been wrong of me to try to guess that. So I just kept it even and used what their town rate was. It is cheaper to live in Ocean Pines than it is Berlin, Pocahontas, or Snow Hill. Don't even think of Salisbury or Pittsville. I just bring them up because we so quickly forget how wonderful it is to live here. And when you look at the assessment, you go, oh, it's so hot. We're really, if you, if you change that word to tax, we're the lowest taxed municipality in the county. Or town. Now, you could live outside of a township or city, okay? Outside and county limits where you're not in, and you're right, then it would be lower. But if you really think about it, I had a question about sworn police officers. Ocean Pines, we have 15. I think we're at 16 now, is that correct? We're 15, I think it was, yeah, 15 and a half is what he gives, we have one part time. Good, it's not 15. Okay, but that's what we have. Interestingly enough, folks, we have way too many police officers, it's expensive. Does anyone know the safest community in the county? Or not, not even close. Ocean Pines. Safest community. If you say, well, do we really need it? We have county sheriff. Folks, safe community adds property value. Ultimately, everything we do, whether it's our police or public works, anybody that's thankful, should be promoting property value. Quite frankly, that's a big part of your property here, we need to protect those values. Safety of the community does that. So when you start to look at these numbers and you break them down, because the assessments why I get, that's one of the big ones, between facilities and assessment, two big ones. I just saw it get out in front, share it with you. Okay? Beach Club. Things important, we've had very little, very little negative responses at all this year compared to mishaps over the beach club. I did get one this week, and I got one immediately following it. If you look at the last names, they look related to me, but I can't promise. Same last name, male, female. I can't say they're honest, but I did get two. Beach Club's dirty, the beach club, a lot of negatives about it. And again, we, a lot of people, everyone has some feeling, I'm good with that. Here's what I'll tell you though, things weren't doing differently that should prevent some of that. A, just before the season kicked off, we hired, we didn't do it, we hired a professional cleaner cleaning all the grout, and you all know there's all the tile and everything on the floor. So we had that professionally done from a company that does that for a living. So we know they were clean when they started. The other big issue that we had over there was our drains, the sand, because we, again, beach club coming off the beach, sand everywhere. Kept hogging them. We had three emergency calls because the water was backing up because the pipes were clogged last year. Minimum $1,200 each call for the emergency call. Had come in, bring the pipe, pump that out so the water could drain. We did a little smarter this year. We said, okay, well, if we want to let, and Carrie was big in helping this, what would we need to do to prevent that? Well, guess what? We started looking at companies that could come out on a weekly service contract and pump it out as an ongoing process. Hacking a lot cheaper than the $3,600 we spent for the emergency calls. And guess what? We're keeping the sand cleaned out once a week. So it is getting a lot cleaner. In addition, we changed our management strategy there. Last year, just interesting to me, we had food and beverage manager that oversaw our food and beverage, Linda, who's over there now. We had wrecking parts overseeing the parking lot and the bathrooms. Our wrecking parts director who's here overseeing bathrooms there. And we had our quad extractor overseeing the pool. Now, what happens if there's a problem? Who can correct it? Well, I don't know, we have to call back here, who's available, who's there. It's just got to be nonsense. We put Linda in charge of that facility. She has authority, if the bathroom's dirty, tell the attendant, clean the bathroom. Parking lot's not flowing, step out there and help redirect it. Simple, but it's made a big difference. Our complaints have virtually gone down to nothing. Other things we've done, we've taken a couple of steps, because it is old over there, folks, we're, we recognize it's an old building. All our facilities, 40 years old, we recognize that. We're able to take an opportunity with one of the local contractors had some surplus countertop material. This is what the bathrooms look like. Everybody recognize that? Those that have been there, I hope you do. Okay? Let me see, just, it was all getting pretty nasty and chewed up. This is what they look like now. Not a lot of money, I think we had 28, three, a three grand total in both bathrooms. Toward the countertops now, okay? New faucets, new sinks, all new fixtures, okay? Drip edge, front edge, everything cleaned up. What a difference it makes. If you wipe it up when you go and clean it, guess what? Get clean it. It's not all cut and groomed and nicked where sand gets caught, it just looks nasty. So we're taking steps. Is it the end-all, be-all? No, it's not. But you know why? It's a good step in the right direction between managing it differently, getting aggressive with the sand contractor, and now this. Again, frequently asked questions. Okay, other quick questions that come up, I'm not going to go into great detail because, hey, dog park, big issue, get 100 calls, Mr. Lederling's right in the front, he calls me daily or every other day? At least every other day. Where are we? What are you doing? Where are we? What are you doing? Finally, I said, here, you know, board of directors, they're the ones that direct me? And everyone had a call because they've all called, what did you do? So we're pressing, you know, we're trying to do what we're doing with the dog park, we're working on our numbers. We'll have something to bring to the board at next Wednesday's board meeting. Casino revenue. Last month's board meeting, for those that may have missed it, we're getting a lot of questions about casino revenue. The board has asked me to come up with potential opportunities with what to do with casino money. Right now, the casino money is in a BB and T account right across the street, okay? And we're just, as we get to checks, we're piling them up. We have, I said piling, we have 120, what's our last count? 91, but we're getting, so by the end of the month, we should be at about 120, which the amount checks we're getting. Okay? Haven't spent it, it's not in the budget. We didn't know how, when the budget was built, we didn't know how much we were going to get. Okay? The other thing we have to be careful of, we don't conflict by using that money, there's certain parameters, but we also have to be careful that we don't duplicate, let's say if we're going to put that towards, and I'm not saying we're doing this, I'm giving you an example, okay? So don't hang me on this one. But let's say that we're going to put it into roads or police department or whatever we decide. We need to be careful. We get money from the county for police, we get, are supposed to get money that we haven't ever received from the county for roads. Well, the concern is, if we start to apply it there, then when the faucet gets turned back on for monies for those, are they going to go, oh no, you're just using your casino money? Which would be terribly unfair. So we've got to be really, really careful. A, that we follow the rules in which the money was granted to us, and B, that we don't cut off our nose, spite our face later. Lastly, elections location, that has come up. Where will elections be held? There was a move from, reported, and this came out from the fire department to the country club. Okay? From the south side fire department to the country club. Then the question comes up, well, wait a minute, we just changed the priority for country club to be the number one priority instead of yacht club, so how's that impact the election? Quite frankly, I don't have a good answer yet. I'm not going on my priority list based on when an election's held. I'm pressing for what I think's in best interest of the community. The board will redirect that as they see fit. All right, now, we're going to jump into, neat saying, someone quote that I thought was good. "I'm not afraid of tomorrow. I have seen yesterday and I love today." All right? And roll your eyes, we're starting in Q and A, I had to start with a nice soft one here. Okay? Teresa, where I hit the lights? All right, what I'm going to ask is be nice and we'll try to go around and take our time. And who's got the mic? Maybe turn it on the golfer with the microphone. Is it on?
I don't need a mic. I think I already, oh, you get my future voice.
Sure enough.
Concerned by yacht club pool and bar.
Name, name an address, just.
Oh, John Hank, 31 High Sheriff Craig.
Thank you.
The photo you showed without the fence.
Yes, sir.
That was before Ocean Pines was near buildout and the pool wasn't nearly as crowded for the bar as crowded as it is today.
Agreed.
That's just the point, that that could give you a false impression, that picture. But Mike, I, I don't know, you want me to ask you a question like a presidential press conference, if you follow, or whether you want me to give you a whole type?
You got three man's fire away. If I, if I miss it, you'll have to help me.
All right. I want to know, based on, on cost benefits.
Yes.
What the business plan that I assume you've drawn up for moving that fence tells us we're going to increase revenues versus the increased cost? And by increased cost, I mean, I'm assuming, please tell me if I'm wrong.
Sure.
That we have to have guards and certified pool operators there longer hours than there are now.
Okay.
I'm assuming that that means that every time there's even a clap of thunder with that pool bar, no matter how crowded, it needs closed.
Okay.
I'm assuming that we would be able to have like we have in years past, the pool bar open early, like sometimes as early as the end of April, sometimes in May, and sometimes going into the fall as it later is October, because that would require keeping the pool open for those periods gone.
Okay. You're up to three. You're up to three. Stop there if you got more one, let me answer those before I get off.
Yeah, just, just the other, the other point is, is in terms of losing revenue, as I understand, I could be very wrong, so please let me know. I understand that people who don't have pool memberships will still be allowed to use the pool area.
Okay.
What benefit is there for me to buy a pool membership, especially as I know because I see a whole bunch of pool people here, not all of them swim. If I can come into that pool, why should I give you my $150 upfront to use a facility that I can just walk in off the street from Pocahontas and use?
Okay, that's fine. Just stop there, I'll never.
I guess that, that's part of the multi-part question. And then we also have, if we have a business plan, data point, what kind of data we can use to determine whether the moving of the fence was a success or failure.
Okay, all right, I'm going to try to answer all these. If I miss one, please just reaffirm. Uh, A, business plan, this one's going to be a little simple. Have you been there on a busy Friday or Saturday night?
Yes.
Okay, it's packed. You're stuffed into that one section and then just on the other side's completely empty. Okay? So you just look at, from just that standpoint alone, the ability to spread out, to bring more patrons to enjoy the activities that are going on.
Nice and dozen thunder.
Okay. Again, if you allow me to finish, it'll be done soon. Secondly, let's do your thunder one, since that's important. Make sure you all hear me, there are pool goers and deck goers. If you're on one of our decks and thunder and lightning are in the area, I will make sure you clear the deck. I don't need you struck by lightning, that's a safety issue. So whether it's the pool bar or the pool itself, I want you safe. Primary job of the community, maintain the market value, okay? I have to keep you safe. If people start getting hit by lightning because we're making bad management decisions, leaving you out there when you're not smart enough to get off yourself, I'm sorry. It's our responsibility to move you, okay? And we will. Safety is a top priority. Anybody that doesn't understand it, sorry, that's where I am on. So I've instructed Joe, if we get inclement weather where there's lightning, thunder, inside, we have a big enough facility, I've got to tell you, if that's what I got to worry about, we're so packed inside, wow, it's going to be a tough issue to have, I got to tell you, it's business work. It's not always the fun part. I mean, you've seen the Anarondak chairs we've put out there. Access to the pool. Your membership, when you join the pools, your membership's not limited to one pool. We have five facilities for your use and enjoyment. And by the way, your membership gets you year-round membership, not two or three or four months of season. It's a year-round membership, okay? Now, the, okay, well, it is true.
We not offer year-round memberships?
Offer year-round memberships.
We do.
The family membership is.
Okay, well, I'm saying, here's year-round, okay? We have multiple entry points. We do offer year-round memberships. If I need to get the activity guide and quote it exact, I will. I'm trying to give the basic overall question, okay? So we do have different types of memberships give you access. Again, access to the adult pool. I've had someone say, well, you're breaking ACLU guideline, you know, we're going to call ACLU on you. My question is, if you're going to do it then, why wouldn't you do it now? Kids aren't allowed in the pool now, so are we violating now? Well, I'm just saying, that's the type of argument. So I've answered safety and sadness, thunder, lightning, you're off. My call, it's where it is, that's safety for me. Now, we'll try to use common sense, guys. If you're, you can eat out there, yes. Sunbathing, you can do that. Again, we have a yacht club facility that serves dining and beverage. I think that's our primary use over there where we generate the most money from. I got to tell you, that's where most of it comes in, that's where I'm putting my energy, hopefully drive enough to offset enough revenues to cover expenses, so if we do look at renovation or changes later, we have some money coming in to offset that. Okay? I don't know if I got all five, I think I did. You may not like all these, guys. Let's make sure, you all may not like my answers. Let's make sure, you all may not like my answers.
I know I made you over my treatment, is that, I appreciate your answers and no, I may not agree with everything, but at least you, you tried to give.
I tried to answer.
The one answer I didn't hear.
Okay.
Was, how do we judge the effectiveness of moving the fence? How do we see whether the increased cost of having certified pool operators go out?
Certified pool, no, that's good, forgot that one. Uh, we will have a certified pool operator on duty. Okay, one person would check where I left to do this. Even at night, if we move the fence, even though we're not having swimming, we'll have someone there. If I can't sell a couple beverages or dinner to cover that hour, for each hour that we do it, we probably shouldn't be open anyway. I, I mean, really, I mean, that's really what it is. I ought to be able to serve a couple drinks, serve a soda, whatever it is to cover that, that hourly rate.
Or insurance.
Well, our pool, we got, we look at, we're covered either way. I'm sure it didn't have an impact. I thought it would, it didn't. All right. Okay, we'll, we'll go here and we'll jump to, oh, I'm sorry, Teresa's guy, I'm sorry. I'll let Teresa run that and I'll answer the question.
13 Douglas Court. And this is really a follow-up question. I bought a pool pass this year and twice I was over there and the pool was closed but the bars open, which reflects with what you just said, I think.
Why?
Well, I thought you said when the pool is closed because of lightning.
You will come inside.
But the bar do not.
I have, I've instructed Joe, it was told that. And I've said, from now on, if we have inclement weather, now, training, you want to stay in that range, stay in house. We've got thunder and lightning, they're coming in.
But the pool can also be closed pre-thunder, lightning, I guess.
They could, but I mean, I would close the barn.
Okay.
We got to, I mean, we got to apply some common sense for the deal. Teresa, you're moving, so I don't have to get.
I don't need one. Kathy Brennan, I've been here since 1984. I have two properties, one on 32K, the other on 132 Parkside Circle.
Got you.
Um, I'd like for you to answer me because I just do not see it. I've talked to Tom Carey.
Yes, ma'am.
And I've talked to others, and I think a number of us are here. This year was the first year that we bought because we just retired.
Congratulations.
A year-round, thanks, a year-round membership.
Okay.
Because I have some hip problems I want to swim away from. But I don't want to go to any other pool in the summer. I want to go to the yacht club.
Which year-round membership, so I answer correctly.
I'm sorry.
Which year-round membership, so I don't get beat up for that one.
The pool.
I mentioned there was year-round for, there's two of them apparently.
Right, no, this is seasonal and it's one year-round.
And one year-round, that's what I thought earlier.
I think I thought year-round.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. But in the past, since 1984, I bought season.
Okay.
All right. I'd like for you to tell me, I'm just not feeling it or seeing it, what membership does for me? To me, it would not be worth my while, and a lot of us, and I'm just being honest here.
Yeah.
A lot of us have seen people that have said, forget, I'm being honest, you're on critical, forget the membership, okay, I'll just buy the coupons.
Okay.
So why, so what does membership do for me?
Okay, no, great question. I defer to Tom, but I don't want to put him under the spotlight. I'll give you some of the highlights. If I miss a couple, don't. Year-round membership gives you round access to pools. May or may not want to use the indoor pool, but that is part of the membership benefit. Year-round membership, also, membership gives you access to the pools earlier than non-member use. I mean, a couple hours in the morning at the majority of the pools for lap swim, you know, we have people that have really liked that. We're trying to create the membership has its privileges type of thing. If you're willing to pay, I pay the membership annually, we're trying to carve out some things to make it worthwhile to you. They're the two off the top of my head. Tom, are there any, there's the two biggies. Was there any other big ones I missed?
Year-round and about two hours earlier, right, the hours earlier is the, and extended hours. But extended hours for everybody.
Sure. There you go. So they're the two primary, ma'am.
I think we're, we're, come on, we're on the same, on the same topic.
All right, I'm going to answer one more on the pools and then I'm going to move. This, oh, no, let's make sure we're clear. I said it when I started. I control this, I'll answer, here, give me, don't get mad. I will circle back around. I told you, I'll stay as long as you all want. I want to get to other people that have other than pool and I'll come back to you. I'm okay with that. I promise. I will stay as long as you want and answer any pool questions. Yes, go ahead. You had, I said it.
My name is Mark Holcener, I'm in 253.
Yes, sir.
And I've been there for 12 years, or 13 years, I've been over for 12 years.
Okay.
Dan, here you are.
Mike, Teresa's right behind me, sir.
My name is Mark Holcener, 253, and I've been here for 13 years and a pool member for 12 years. And I think where a lot of the confusion is with people that are members, being whether seasonal members or year-round members, when they change the times to give us more access to the pool, it really didn't give us access to the pool. What we were told was that we could come in at eight o'clock, but unless we were swimming laps in the pool or a member of a group like this one of women, we couldn't get in the pool until 10 o'clock, which is the same rule for the people that have a coupon. That's what we were told. Is that not correct, Tom?
It's not correct. The, that pool, the yacht club pool, it's always been lap swimmers only. Between last year was eight to nine, this year it's eight to 10.
So that is true. So the extended hours apply only to.
We have, right, just show hands so I know what we're dealing with here. How many people hear about the one yacht club pool? Okay, I'm going to stop the questions on that. I, I will come back. I promise I will come back and answer as many questions.
Do you understand what we're doing?
I do, I do. But what I don't want to do is have other people, it's only fair to let other people speak. I've sat down, I've, I don't have much questions. Go ahead. I'm not, and secondly, so you all know, I'm not going to be able to answer everyone's question because you're not going to always like the answer. I'm going to do the best I can. What I can't answer, we'll try to get back to you if there's something we can do. But again, folks, there's also feedback because maybe we've missed some things or something has changed. We don't know until we hear from them. Right, yes, ma'am.
Lori Lashford, 141, Nonny Hamley.
Yes, ma'am.
This has nothing to do with pools. Uh, the question is, we had heard that there will be no assessment next year, but there will be assessment for next year and the following year, and there after will not be assessment.
Okay.
True business.
No, we got to answer this one. Please be respectful because it's a good question. The question is probably not the total assessment, increase in the assessment or assessment in general?
No, uh, there's supposed to have been an increase.
Yes, ma'am.
At first they said no.
Okay.
Now they're saying yes.
Yeah. Let's make sure I answer, yeah, I'll answer it both ways. A, to clarify, there, we will have an assessment next year. Again, the board may redirect, but I'm, I'm a vet, man, we're having an assessment. I think the question's probably more specific, will there, will there be an increase in the assessment? I believe that's what you're, you're probably referring to. Uh, the board adopted three years ago a plan for gradual increase in assessments to cover the reserves capital projects. Okay? However, each year, the board has the opportunity to vote on the budget. When they vote on that budget, they make the determination if they are going to continue with that, that five-year plan at the time, or if they're going to redirect. So, to answer your question, yes, there's still a year remaining, or two years now remaining on it, but the, every new board comes in, has the option, they have to vote it up or down. Okay, so it's during budget time, that's what's going, that's, did that answer it? Thanks for your question. Yes, ma'am.
My, my question is also having to do with the statistics.
Name and, go ahead, name, name and.
My name, Margaret Icey.
Hi, Miss Icey. I'm well. Hold the mic close there. I want everybody to hear your question.
All right, but I don't know how, is this working?
Yes, ma'am.
All right. I've, I've been here since 1983 and during, we're able to connect. And during that time, of course, assessments have gone tremendously higher. I, I forget what the percentage is, I've, I've been, since I was here in 83, I think it was less than 500 at that time. However, and now it's over 1,000, what do you think, for assessments? I've often wondered over the years, I've never asked a question about, but I will today.
Don't make it too hard.
Well, considering the fact that the main reason our assessments are higher is because we are on the water, on canals.
Yes, ma'am.
Of course, we do realize that the canals do provide some help to Ocean Pines in general so far as drainage problems and so on. I've often wondered why it is that golf course homes do not have additional assessments when you consider the fact that the golf course never has paid for itself. And then on top of that, a golf course gets the bulkheads, we have all that money she has to spend to keep the brass cut and all that kind of stuff. And the people who live on the golf course have the beautiful views of the golf course, whereas, of course, we have beautiful views of, of water, I guess, but the water, there's always right in front of your house. So I wonder why there are additional assessments for the waterfront homes?
Yeah, no, got you. Let me try to answer, the waterfront homes live on the bulkheads, we have an ongoing bulkhead project, okay? The, the folks that live on there contribute a higher assessment and that goes directly into the golf, uh, the, the bulkhead reserve account and that's to, to complete the bulkhead work around.
Does it cover?
I'm sorry? Well, let me, let me, let me keep going. They're the ones that are on the water. We do have some areas, okay, that are community bulkhead areas, okay, that are areas, they're, they're not behind someone's house necessarily. Penn Hill Park comes to mind, community bulkhead area. That money is under a separate assessment, that general, that's from everybody's assessment because, guess what? That's part of, that does add value to all of us. Now, as to the lots on the golf course, uh, golf course, and again, dirty word, it's, it's a spot where we try to make money within that of the years. Uh, so I, I understand you can be frustrated there, but the truth of the matter is, we've made some significant changes in our golf operations, I, Billy Casper and Damian sitting right there, um, trying to make a difference. The board took some really, um, strong action to say, we're going to try something very different because we recognize we've had losses there. And I'm actually excited at the numbers that the golf course is bringing in. Uh, again, folks, don't come and go, oh, they're, they're either making my bodies or a coat. They're not, but we didn't expect that. Think when they came in in November, not golf season, they're just hitting the stride of the season. So, um, uh, the bulkhead, the reason the bulkhead, or if you live on the water, is that bulkhead project, again, your assessment, if you're on there, goes directly into that reserve fund. All of us pay into the entire reserve fund for the community bulkheads. Does that answer it for you, Ms. Anderson?
Not really.
Well, I know you meant I liked it, you did. I liked the answer, but I'm. Okay.
It doesn't.
All right, yeah. Okay, I'll give back to you, sir. Yes, sir, go ahead.
Name is Dale Brady on 55 Addyshire. I have a question about the unregistered junk vehicles in the yard and the very bulkhead yards with numerous pieces of play equipment, grass, knee-high, please follow up.
Okay.
What's been, what can you do, what are you going to?
No, fair question because it impacts our values. Uh, we have, have been very aggressive in trying to, to clean up the, the properties, have the cars, uh, that, that, the unregistered or junk vehicles. Uh, we've made a, a, a strong effort to make improvements there. We have a community with 8,442 properties, we're going to have those types of situations. Uh, we went from upwards of 1,200 or 1,400 violations down to, what are we down to? Did Karen look at numbers? 100 and 130? Under 100 now. Uh, so, so have really been aggressive with that. Uh, we've been to court, we've got court orders to have work done, we've gone in and cleaned up property. Now, I, I need to caution when I say that, though, I do get the call, hey, I don't like the play equipment, and I'm not saying your neighbor has good or bad, but play equipment, I don't like the way they have something set up in their yard. A lot of it's private property, you know, the, the, the play equipment or whatever other things, if they have a lot of trinkets or the pink flamingos or whatever it is, that's in the eye of the beholder. The judge doesn't allow us, because we don't like the way that looks, to go take it. One of the other ones that have come up to me along with that are the towels over the banners, okay? That's come up a lot. Folks, we're in a beachfront community with pools, we're going to have that. We don't allow clotheslines, but guess what, we're going to have the towels. So we have been aggressive with it. Uh, it may not be to everyone's liking, but I will tell you, public, great job, Steve Guy, bringing down the number of, of grievous violations. Yeah, we're trying, not, please understand, this is a watch, it doesn't fix it right away. We're working on, probably on the hit, if it's bad, it's on the list. Um, where we're, okay, we have a couple in the back, yes, sir, go ahead.
I'm leaning on it, I didn't work in there.
How are you, sir?
Pretty good. Uh, the money we get from the casino, my understanding that you're limited to what you can use that for.
Infrastructure.
Correct. Okay, that's what I thought. Second thing is, oh, we passed here, I've been getting a lot of mail from different electric companies, offering me deals, you just cut your bill in half. My understanding when I moved in here that we were assigned to Jump Tank Electric and that's who we had.
Don't take the other deals. They can't get it, no, Jump Tank Services, they do a good job for it.
I thought, yeah, maybe you should put something out in writing to tell people that.
Well, Mike, that's, you get this mail. No, no, you're good. Just like Reddit, right, your list, your name's bought from a company and they're just sending you today, say, junk mail. Uh, we, Jump Tanks are a provider, we're pleased, I mean, anybody that was here years ago, and now with the new, I mean, we've had great success with them, I don't see them leaving us and we certainly don't want to leave them.
Might be worth, that, what, someone a newsletter or something?
No, I understand.
The third thing is.
Third?
Third?
Right, I'm, I'm, go ahead.
One local publication, uh, several months ago, had an article entered about, since 2007.
Yes.
Our assessment increases were slated for reserve, for refurbishment. Then he come out and said, none of that money was put toward the reserves. Is that true?
No, sir. It's, it's not true. Uh, I, and I'm not, I'm trying to avoid it, I just don't want, the papers will quote Bob saying X. There's, uh, I will tell you, one board member has a, has spent hours and hours and hours, and he can be a pain in, in the backside for me with some of that. And I'm not going to say he's here, but, uh, but with that being said, has done a complete reserve study and I can tell you factually, every dollar's been accounted for. Now, as he, he's tried to lay that out on numerous occasions, okay, and show people, there's, still seems, reserves can be confusing because of depreciation and how the reserves are, but I can tell you, looking at the numbers, and I'm pretty good with numbers, uh, every dollar's now been accounted for and, and, and they were spent the way they were supposed to be spent. Now, doesn't mean everyone agrees with how they're spent, i.e. covered pool, got way over here and way over there, but they were spent appropriately. And that's this board and back. A lot of people say, oh, that board, every board's followed the rules. I have yet to find one that has not. Are we in the back now? And we'll go to this side. Yes, sir?
Uh, good evening, my name is Gene Rinkstore, I live in Two Carriage Lane, unless you have, I owe you money, I don't live there. Bob, I got a couple of questions here. First of all, uh, every year we have town hall meeting in February to go over the budget that the staff has proposed to the board.
Yes, sir.
Uh, we get quarterly reports on, on budget versus actual.
Yeah.
And then we have our annual meeting and Mr. Dick Hall gets up there and makes a great presentation about how well Ocean Pines has done when he compares actual for the current year with actual from the last year. We have no idea what that means. I suggest that you limit his discussion on actual versus actual, and you make a full-blown presentation on how he did for the year comparing actual to budget, so it's consistent with everything else the membership has been comparing you against, okay? That's our annual meeting coming up and I think it is a brilliant idea. Keep it if I do say so myself, no. Don't make me seriously, but, um, second thing that I had.
I don't have to answer that one, right?
Second thing that I had was, um, when the Java Bay Cafe was, uh, the idea was brought before the board, the board advocated.
Yes.
Did you or did OPA Inc. create a separate profit-loss center for Java Bay Cafe?
I'll let you go with the rest, and I'll answer them.
Well, did you hear that portion?
No.
No.
Wait, that was easy.
I would suggest that Ocean Pines cannot open new business ventures and measure how well they're doing without creating a separate profit-loss center, when they are saying, "We're doing this to enhance our profit." Well, for whatever, I think you need, just as a business proposition, a profit-loss center. I know you don't expect to make a profit at the beginning, but if you don't have a profit-loss center, you'll never know when you are making a profit. So I think you need to have that whenever you come up with a new business venture. Okay, that's just a suggestion. And the last thing, this is an old question that I have...
Is this one a question or another statement? Ask me something, I need to answer.
This is for Mr. Carmine.
It's coming to me. Don't ask our, do not ask our question.
Okay, all right, I'm gonna ask you a question.
Ask me.
Mr. Thompson.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to know if the donated labor materials by steam when the pool cover was built has been accounted for on books of Ocean Pines.
I will give back to you with that answer.
Thank you very much.
I'll give you that answer, please. Can I jump for you? Tracy's moving, I'll promise I get to you. Yes, sir?
Jack Ferry, 16 Martin Circle.
How are you, Jack?
Not a complaint.
Oh, even better, thank you.
Well, it may be at the end of the day.
Oh, I knew it was gonna be.
When I was interested, Bob.
Yes.
Like, when we hit July over the outcoming, these people are running in 10 different directions over there to try to make a buck for themselves and for us.
Hopefully for us.
It looks like we have a lack of cooling space over there. I checked on...
Lack of cooling space?
Like to cool your halves of beer?
Okay.
Okay, because periodically, like almost every weekend, Joe can tell you this, that we run out of some of our beers, and I feel that it's probably because we have a lack of cooling space, and I was just wondering if this is a problem? Do we have any room maybe at the country club that we could put a couple barrels over there and shuffle them down? Or even like buy Joe a small cooler or something like that for this time of the year? Okay? And it's always like, and now the complaint. It's always, it's always England beer, which is what I drink. Is it three weekends in a row, we ran out of beer? And it's not because I drink so much, it's just... Okay? But that was, I would say, I have no complaint, but I thought of the way to help these folks.
I will get to the answer to that. I don't know, it's first number of that's important.
Okay, thank you.
We will definitely look at it. We do not want to run out of product if you're spending money. I guarantee you that. All right, Tracy's come around, folks.
I'm Helen Curly from 7510. Um, they said that we were 550 dollars in the red on people who voted assessments.
Yes.
I'd like to know how much of that we have collected, and how much are we in the red now?
All right, I may need a little help on this. We've, uh, who's our number now? You don't want to look up the code names? I have to get it for you. We changed our policy, and I'm not dodging that one, I just don't want to quote something really wrong on that number. We've got pretty aggressive in our collections to include engaging with a collection agency for monies. We've had, unfortunately, issues where folks have had, gone bankrupt, have more of that, and they're seeing it in the news and hearing it. But we are actually trying to enforce those collections. Not to be mean-spirited, to be honest with you, that's a tough one for maybe someone struggling with their house to say, "Hey, we're gonna take you if you don't pay." But truth of the matter is, we've got a lot of people that do, and it's not fair to them that folks not pay. So what we did was recruit, for those that don't know, there's a list that's created, it's reviewed on a regular basis, and we narrowed down, and what we've been doing is groups of 10 from the most egregious offenders, and then moving forward from there. We've been real fortunate, the most of our work has worked out, or has come to the resolution of a payment plan, which is really where we want to be. We don't want to take property, I mean, we don't, it's not, that's not our goal. Our goal is to help find a way to relieve that burden, and not relieve it by letting you walk away from it, relieve it by giving you a smaller payment plan to find a way to work your way out of that situation. I can get those numbers, I know we've talked about, we've mentioned it at the board meetings because the board members have asked that, and what we can do is at the next board, give me till next Wednesday, I'll give an update on that.
Okay, but how much we have collected, and of course, there might be more since then, so how much are we in there?
I got you. We have it, I'm telling you, I look at it all the time, I just don't want to misquote that one. See, that's kind of a big force. We're talking half a million dollars or more, it's a lot of money. Okay? Tracy's...
Jill Buser, 173 9 AM, got a nice sawmill for you.
Say that again?
Got a nice sawmill for you.
Thank you, I could use money.
All facilities in the entrances of that are beautiful, except one area.
Okay.
Swimming rack. I think that's terrible. The wall over, it's an asphalt thing, it's a bit of, it's a, maybe we dress that up, put some benches in, maybe a couple trees.
For the center, the center area you're talking about?
Yes.
Yeah, the asphalt is cracked up there, I agree with you.
Little pad or something, or a couple, like benches, dress it up, that looks terrible. That's my only thing.
That's fair. And that's what we're here for. We've done a lot of work at the, and you, Bob, used to have been there, that's probably one spot we haven't, we wrapped the columns, we redid the decking, new fencing, we did the crush and run all the way around, expand the walking trail. That center is kind of like this, and it is cracking up, so we will take that under advisement. Thanks for the input, and Tracy, I promise it'll get to you. Yes?
I want to know, down the parkway, when we there?
Yes, ma'am.
Two houses have trees taken down. There's not a tree on their property.
South end, right?
And, uh, like, we have trees taken down, we had to replace them.
Right.
They did not replace any...
Say where you were again, I want to make sure I know where.
Well, it's on the east side.
Yeah, on the left side, it's your heading south.
Yeah. There's two houses.
Mm-hmm. I can answer.
It's heavy.
No, I understand.
It's horrible. They haven't replaced any trees, at least one or two. When we took down trees, we were told we have to replace it, but our trees, and that's what we did. But nothing there has been replaced.
I don't know about the repla, I can tell you why they were down, they were diseased. The disease was hitting multiple trees there, had to get aggressive, go beyond the ones that have been affected, so it wouldn't continue to grow in that whole area. So they did have to take down more, not only the diseased ones, but the ones just adjacent to it to prevent the disease from continuing.
So, I don't have a dog.
You said you had one.
My son has a dog.
Yes, ma'am.
I find ours a dog, and people have dogs, and dogs, and they go in their own yards. I have people that walk up and down our street. Dogs go, they don't pick it up.
And you're questioning for me? I'm not, I'm not picking up dogs. You want a dog?
I don't have a dog, I don't have my money, pay for something.
Okay, and that's, okay, I like that question. No, no, that's fine. Do you mind if I ask a couple of quick questions of you? Do you use all the pools?
No, because I get my association to it.
I'm just sharing, but other people do. So the part, when you're looking at those types of things, tennis, the tennis courts surround, paddleball courts, the community center, these all add value. Now, not everyone agrees, trust me, not everyone wants a skateboard park. It's there, it's added some value, maybe not, I'm past that skateboard and I don't want to get on it, okay? But I, because I don't use it, doesn't mean we don't need it. There's been a big...
Well, that's where the children, the children do need a place to go.
And those that walk the dogs feel that they, that they want to have a dog park.
You say, "Well, all these people are, you said, don't want..."
I certainly hope not, there'd be tons of stuff there. You know what? Again, there's always different views on it. We're looking at it, the board will have the ultimate decision on whether we press for it, we're gonna have numbers and present it at the next meeting, but I will tell you, I've had overwhelming support, and please, that doesn't mean start calling me, emailing me, "Bob, dog parks bad." I don't, I'm not saying it, but I've had a lot of very positive. So that's why we're trying to take our time and get it so it looks right, it adds value, not just a stockade fence. I just, I don't like that. Not for our community. Tracy, where'd you move? Oh, there you finally, you guys, Billy. Yes, sir?
My name is Jim Girardi, and I live at 10 Hickory Williams House.
Yes, sir.
I listened to your logic behind the mosquitoes.
Okay.
And I would like to put some holes in, in three minutes.
Are you asking me a question or just going to call?
No, no, I just said I want to put some holes in your logic.
All right, go ahead.
First of all, you're dealing with a creature that has to live off of, whether it's human or animal. Second of all, when your truck goes by and does a spray, when he runs down, when he drives down a main road, he has, when he shoots the spray up, it goes so far. Unless that truck backs into everybody's driveway and sprays, you don't get anything from him driving down the street. The idea of driving down the street with that spray, it's reactive. When you're dealing with a creature like this, you have to be proactive, you have to kill it before it goes. Nothing in your, in your display there was about killing them in the water, which was where they killed them. And there's stagnant water throughout Ocean Pond. There's more stagnant water than is running water, and that's what had some mosquitoes grow. So I would like to say to the board, "Go find another company that's gonna be proactive against mosquitoes instead of reactive. You gotta kill them before they're born."
Okay.
That's it. Thank you, have a nice day. I know there's a, there's a resident that takes this stuff very soon, Tom Himmel. We do treat a lot of stagnant areas, there's like 27 stagnant areas that they take pucks to. If you want to know about the mosquitoes in Ocean Pond, call Tom Himmel. Get his number for you. Okay, wait a minute, um, if I could, say something about that.
I tell you, here's one...
Your company came out, you're saying he did a, did a test and says, "The mosquitoes saved us last year." That is ridiculous.
No, 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 here, here, let me, I'm not, I, that's why I wasn't going to answer the question. It's a county program, I don't pretend to know more or less than the county, we're subscribed to their program, it's not a separate company, it's through the county. That's who I'm gonna use unless the board directs me otherwise. I'm not a mosquito guy, I follow with county, use its supplies. And again, you obviously have...
And they're still getting bit.
I'm sorry, I can't, I'm not sending your order with the water, I don't have an answer to that. I'm using my resources to factor it in.
That's a way, that's a strange...
They listen to what others, what others...
You provide me, it's all good, I got you.
You have a point, boy.
All right. All right, hang on, I promise I'll get back to you. Yes, sir?
My name is Joe Green, I'm 82, 40. It's not a complaint.
That's all right.
But I need your help, okay? 923 40.
Yes.
We're in the garden, when, garden there is?
Yes.
That's part of the road, and people walk in the middle of the road, the road is a 20-foot road, I think, is that right, Bear?
Main Creek?
Yes. And they walk in the road from east and pulling into the park where the playground is and everything. And 20-foot road, they will walk in 10-foot going one way and 10-foot coming the other way, and they will not get out of the way of cars coming down the road. You don't want to sneak up behind one and blow the horn, because they'll retaliate against you. And it's not a safe place to walk. I bet a month ago, I saw a gentleman walking down the road with a walker in the road, no place for him to walk, he was heading towards the...
That's true.
So the help that I've asked them for, and I'm sure I can give from the park, if they could get, I told Judy Bob's about a year ago, and she said she looked at it, come back with no money. I talked to Mr. Atkins and his supervisor from the county highway department, they came back, no money. When I'm talking big money, I just want to know if anything could be done to make a path for the people to walk along, keep them out of the road. If you have your dog park down there, that's what I'm talking, four people on the road walking with their dogs to those who are dog park. They're done now with the kids on skateboards and bicycles. So I'd just like to know if somehow, if Ocean Pines, and I'm gonna get to the park, living in the park, see if we can get together and present some kind of petition to Judy Bob's and just let her know where the situation is and get some money involved. I mean, we're not resursicing 589, we're just putting a walkway for about a couple, about a block and a half.
Oh, got you. All right, I'll, let me address this, and you're not gonna like this, and it's not our road.
I know it's a county road, so we, all I need to know, if you would give some input saying it would be safe if the county could put a walkway along the road, I just...
Here's what I'm gonna tell you, not my road.
That's true.
I can't dedicate resources to it, I can't put a person on that road working, if someone gets injured, our liability goes through the roof because we're not, you know, we have a couple issues with Main Creek Road, okay, just to carry that out a little bit. That's not the only unsafe area. All, I could argue that the unsafe area is where across the 589 for everybody going to Food Lion. No, that's the worst area, and the county can't even find money for crosswalking. When you see kids crossing the grass to go across to McDonald's, or to go buy a video, that's a problem. The second issue we have on Main Creek Road, cigarette butts. It's dirty, it's nasty, I think it poorly represents our community. Again, I'm struggling with that a little bit, the county should be cleaning that, it should not be terribly expensive, they don't pay a whole lot of attention to that area. My recommendation is you petition your county officials to get them to pay attention to that road more.
Yeah, you can, I've tried, but all they say, they say is no money.
I hear you, I, again, if you get all the park residents riled up to do it, I bet they find something. I'm going to. But that's my answer.
I'm trying to, and now we're really pushing hard, because maybe the dog park would be in that position, I don't know to sure, but it will be.
No, I'd love to be able to help you there, again, it's not our road, makes it difficult to do any work on.
I think I can round up on my code.
You might be able to.
Put a code to the commission. I think it's a little...
Thank you for the questions.
923...
Where?
Right over there.
Yes, ma'am, fireway. Didn't you speak one?
I did, this is my second time, I just wanted to offer a question, sure, for the mosquito, probably. But why don't you see if the county would do an aerial spray, an analog, maybe we should do that, I know if I can do that, you can really...
I hear that, good question. In the back.
Hi, my name's Jill.
Jill?
Jill.
From?
83 Randi One.
Okay. Hi, Jill.
Hi, how are you? Actually, it was kind of about the roads. Are there any plans to repave any of the side streets?
Great question. We have a, was it 10 years, it's moved out to a 12-year, it'll probably become a 15-year road plan. The reason I say that, and I'm disappointed with that, is we get county, county money for the roads, I mean, that's how roads are funded, it's part of the agreement. We haven't been receiving that money. So we're actually getting backed up in a corner a little bit, to figure out what we're gonna do. Do we extend our road plan, which was pretty good, I mean, we, we're pretty aggressive, far more aggressive than the rest of the county with it, in maintaining our roadways, and unfortunately, we're just not getting the money from the county as agreed.
Casino money.
Well, that's, again, we talked about that earlier, casino money's coming in, the board's gonna have to make some decisions. Again, if we spend it there, then when the money comes back for the road money, are they gonna say, "You don't pay it now because you're using that"? I don't have the answer, I'm just telling you, that's what wrestling, Jill, did that answer your question?
Yeah.
It's not, it's not a good answer, I can tell you that.
William Connolly to Harvey Thrive.
I can hear you.
Thanks for putting in the doors.
Oh, you're welcome. Those who has not been here, those doors were not in, and basketball, anything going on, you couldn't have a meeting because it got, you could have it, but there was a lot of disturbance, so, thank you for that. Yes, sir?
Yes, it was so.
I don't need a mic either, helping.
I can hear you.
Just a few suggestions.
Please, Damon.
I'm sorry, I'm 15, 45, Woodup Drive. Are you there?
I'm glad I'm not the only one.
These accounts are all the way.
Don't ask me an account, don't ask me an accounting question.
I know, I'm not going to, I'm not gonna be that mean tonight. Well, I need to touch a little bit.
Go ahead.
I don't want to use up all my three minutes.
I don't want to use up all my three minutes. One of, this gentleman talked about power purchases, uh, I think you can purchase your power from other people. You're still gonna have chop tanks delivering your power. Now, only way you're gonna bring your prices down is find somebody that's cheaper, I, I wouldn't do it myself. Uh, about the only cheaper car you're gonna find, if you can buy somebody's solar power or go get some hydroelectric from the west coast.
Gotcha.
But it is possible. Um, on the mosquito schedule, I just want to make sure you don't give that schedule to the mosquitoes when we're spraying. That's a little humor.
I'll do my, I like that.
One thing I would like you to consider is, and, and I've talked with the different administrations here, the mailbox clusters around here, this place is getting long into two Ocean Pines is, okay? As a lot of us are.
Speak for yourself.
I'd like to see, I'm down there by the wood duck, I don't know, we got about three hundred boxes there, you know, the one, the gentleman was killed down there, they, they replaced most of the boxes that lead this way.
Right.
You probably got about thirty years' variances, the concrete's about gone, get your feet wet. I mean, if there's any way cheaper form, we could include some of those on the schedule in a budget, to fix a couple of them, I'd appreciate it. I know that your budget's tight on that end also, but I just think we'd do a lot to beautify it. It could be anything that looked like current landing, and it'd be wonderful. The other, the other, the cheap thing, if you could throw, Harry, this is on your budget, man, I'm sorry. But the, the cheap thing would be, we could buy some grass seed around there, throw it in the, you know, out front, you know, by the memorial, and maybe throw it around slower in the median, and then we can start cutting grass instead of weeds for a while. It just would be nice. If you look at new, new places, new facilities, haven't been overtaken by the years' worth of weeds. I don't, don't spray the weeds, because nothing will be there. But if you could just buy some grass seed somewhere in that budget. And that comes up with the casino revenues. I would suggest you hang one of those revenues, you all have estimated a eight-hundred-thousand-dollar increase in revenues this year for the ponds, twenty percent increase. I still say we should be cautious, till such times as we know that we've made in revenue estimates, or we've reduced our costs, before we start spending the casino revenue.
We have gotten a little more aggressive on the, uh, the grass side of it, just so you know. Uh, Andre, who was working at golf course when Billy Casper came in, we had to redundant to him. And Andre went from there to public works, and he's actually been, uh, doing a very good job with exactly that, because it's pretty fast effective, uh, when he knows grass, you know, he's trying to, we started with some of the fields, uh, anybody's, had to see softball field, some of the, uh, soccer fields and such, just trying to get those back to better shape, and we'll start looking at that. So, we do have someone that's got that, but I'm a little understeer, and that is relatively inexpensive, it's just big time. Okay, we're gonna go, probably two more questions, because it's getting a little bit late, um, and then I will stay and talk to the pool people, as I promised I would. Dutch?
All right. We're both great twelve road guys.
All right, I'll take a couple more, just bear with me. All right, Dutch, go ahead.
I've talked to you about it a couple times, uh, about the twenty percent, the, like, you people can get banned from going, personally. And in the last, uh, meeting, when we presented to who the people that worked for the board that was for, that we owe five-hundred-thousand dollars that we, people can vote on, see, twenty percent is a lot of money.
Dutch, I don't mean to cut that off, that's a board and bylaw situation, I can't, I have no impact on that.
I know, but.
Well, hang on, if you have a question, I don't want it to become a board meeting, and we just make statements. If you have something for me.
I did for you. I wanna answer, it was told me that was put on the ballot.
What one?
Uh, that question, you know, that you cut the, the twenty percent down. Uh, he, he told me that, that's what, that's what said, you know, we voted there a couple years ago on, they, they told me.
I will, I, I don't know that, I, I don't think that's the, well, wait a minute, Theresa might know. Theresa, did we add anything about the amount on the ballot? Amount of how much per referendum, how much board can spend? We did not, right? No, that would've, okay, three years ago, we didn't, that would've been a board directive.
And, and the other thing, okay, let's go, you talked about the gas.
Natural gas?
Yeah, when that comes in, we have to change, or fix on, on the, you know, the, the base on that.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
What is, is anybody said for the full cost by household?
No, don't know, based on appliance age, no, that's, that's all something, we'll, that'll be the next phase, again, it's not.
Well, you don't know.
No, sir. I wish I did.
Yeah, I wish.
Okay, we had a couple more.
I had one online, they won't know.
Uh, we've had online questions, but I'm trying to get the folks here. All right, I'm gonna, we're gonna do a speed Q and A. Well, go ahead, Rick.
I would say that, uh, we're handling a lot of third-party Ocean Park way, but if you agree with or disagree with them, Ocean Pines are good hands, hopefully next thirty years with Paul Thompson. And we appreciate you coming out, answering the questions. Who hasn't done this for a long time? And who about has? And we owe them a big round of applause.
Thank you. That was a speed one. All right, couple others, my question's how we're getting it. Here's, I don't know, I'm gonna, I'm gonna do this real quick, make it short.
Yes, sir. All three seventy Ocean Park way. Did a great job with the leaves last year, working with Ocean City to get their trash truck and pick them up and all that.
Yes, sir.
Are you gonna do that again this year?
It's our intention to do so, if they'll allow us to lease that truck.
Yeah, real quick, um, also around the pump stations, where they were talking about the mailbox, they used to talk about the, um, the waste pump stations, if they're gonna try to do something with the fencing around and things like that, that was all over a year ago.
Yeah, there was, and what happened, just, he's talking about the, the fencing that were around all the pumping stations within the pines. What actually occurred there was, uh, the county said, yeah, we'll be happy to look at it, we'll change the volume if you want us to, but when we knew that, we're increasing your fees because, for the water, wastewater, because that's what they're inserting, and we gotta pass that fee on. So, the board elected at that time, uh, or decided at that time to continue with the wooden fencing and not, you know, press forward with requiring the newer, more expensive fencing, because that would've been passed on the, um, yes, sir?
Grand Hill, you have a, uh?
Yes, sir.
I think you should revisit that, uh, subject of, of fences. They, they, uh, the advisory board for a water company, uh, did examine the fences, and they found that a lot of them are needed replacement, and then they, what they haven't done, and they've spent four years now. They've spent, uh, they're, they're doing million-dollar projects, and this year they're spending almost, almost a million dollars, and that's their work, our water tower together. It's not an absolute necessity, but they do like to do million-dollar projects, while they're hopeful of the fencing continues to be over our, uh, job.
Other, yes, ma'am?
Just real quick.
Sure.
I'm from Sixteen Weather Lane, I'm back from Mediacom. It would be wonderful if we could have them come out again.
They didn't, there's the annual, that they have an annual, it's in the fall, that they actually come out and they do exactly this.
Okay, good.
They won't come out.
Most unhappy with it.
No, they'll, they'll come out.
Okay.
All right, yes, sir, you've been right up front the whole time. I'll take that.
I would've gotten up.
Yes, sir.
This is a direct one, Bob. According to, uh, Ocean Pines financial figures published in a little bit, just because last month, at the end of the fiscal year, ended April thirtieth, your general manager's office was seventy-three thousand dollars over budget, thirty percent negative variance. Would you tell us how that additional seventy-three thousand dollars was spent, please?
Over budget?
That's what the paper printed.
We were ahead of budget.
Yeah.
We were in a positive variance, so we saved money for the association members.
Well, that's right, my fault.
Oh, no, it's all, great question, if you had it, someone else did. No, we were ahead of budget. Now, these were unaudited numbers, uh, we're under the audit now, we're hoping to have that wrapped up in the next thirty days, but they were unaudited, but they were positive variance, which was good for all of us. We spent less money.
Is that a positive variance for Arthur's office also? I showed twenty-nine thousand dollars.
He's talking about, uh, the general manager's office first, there was an overage in that, uh, due to.
On the one-line item, not overall budget.
Overall budget.
He said overall budget.
Talking about what appeared in the progress.
Overall budget, seventy-nine thousand.
Seventy-three for the general manager's office, twenty-nine.
For that line item?
No, for the office. Twenty-nine for Arthur's.
The GM office was.
Yeah, administration, all right, let me, uh, let me answer the, how I think. A, we're ahead of budget, the one item, uh, the one-line item administration, which includes GM's office?
No, it was broken out, there were two line items, one was administration, which I don't even understand, the other was general manager, and of course, there was financing, dot com, oh nine yards.
I can answer the GM one, that one's easy. Yeah, in fact, it, we, we had more money, um, we were in the red in the GM, we had to pay for G, two GMs for six months, severance pay.
That amount of seventy-three thousand dollars?
Two GMs for six months.
Seventy-three thousand.
I, I don't know what, no, it all wasn't that, but that's where the majority of it was.
Thanks.
Yeah. But we were, end of the year, we were ahead of budget, overall.
For the entire association.
For the entire, we're gonna say.
I was taking the line item.
Okay, yeah, the line item would've been, we had two GMs for six months.
Thank you.
Sure. Even though I don't like the Phillies hat.
Actually, I have to say it.
Yes, ma'am. Here, I'm sorry, Pat, let me give you this. So, everybody in here.
My name's Pat Glenn, and I live on Sixteen Weather Lane. Um, I'm talking, bringing up the issue of, every year you send out a booklet showing the activities and the fees.
Activity guide?
Yeah, the activity guide.
Yes, ma'am.
Tells you what the fees are for all of the different amenities.
Okay.
Um, I don't use most, any of the amenities myself, because I'm not capable, um, but I do take my grandchildren to the pool. Now, the kids can't go in the pool without an adult present, well, why should I get charged two dollars to sit in a chair? When the kids can't go in unless I'm there.
Sure.
I think that's wrong, number one. And number two, it costs, I don't think it's right that people that don't pay their pines fees, we all pay our pines fees, we, um, I don't think they should go and charge a dollar more for people that don't pay their pines fees over what I'm already paying these up. You know, a dollar over what I'm being charged is wrong.
Okay. All right, uh, let's talk about the, let's start with the harder one, which is the two dollars for, uh, visitor, or spectator. Uh, we were having some chats with the folks, we're coming into the pool area, taking up space, we had patrons that wanted to come in and use the pool, and they'd come in and take up three or four or five chairs, and this wasn't that one pool, it was multiple pools. And, um, a decision was made, and I supported it, and still do, from a standpoint of, we're trying to manage our resources a little more effectively.